9:00 PM, we should be starting at 5:30.[2.29][2.29](laughter) But there are certain people in this room who could not move out of the back room to the front in time. So let's try to be better about that in the future.[13.51][13.51](laughter)
Well, we don't have to worry because you're not going to be there.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Mr. Scirrano? Mrs. McCulloch?
Here.
Mr. Segal?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Escobedo? With five present, two absent, we have a quorum.
Okay, before we go any further, thank you to Rod Waddell and Connor Childers, who are working behind the scenes to produce the board's broadcast on Channel 20.[53.78][53.78](applause) They're behind the scenes. Childers? Okay. Childers. I just want to remind everyone that we've agreed that we're going to hold our questions until after the presentations, so we'll let our people, everybody do the presentations, and then you can ask whatever questions you want after the presentations. First item on the agenda is the meeting minutes, the meeting minutes of 7:17-18. Are there any changes, corrections, or additions to the meeting minutes? If not, is there consensus to approve? Everybody nod their heads yes? Thanks. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda was pulled by administration, and that leads us to new business. Ms. Yar, please present our first item, Follet Resource Manager.
Good evening. I'm pulling for, I'm bringing forward the Follet Resource Manager for an inventory system. I brought this to Finance Committee a couple of months ago that I was looking into inventory systems to try to streamline our processes, and we have multiple software systems. So my problem is that we have too many inventory systems. This is very difficult for our staff. We have a bunch of logins for very various systems. So if we can eliminate one software system, I think that we should go forward with that. So that is my problem. The current state is we have Haze for the district inventory, and then we have Follet for our library and textbook. So the future state that I'm recommending is the Follet Resource Manager, which will replace the Haze district inventory. So we'll have it all in one system, essentially. The alternative choices that I looked into was only other district-owned software, because I didn't want to add another software piece. We already have Haze. We don't need another inventory system. We have that. But if we could get away from that, then I thought we should look into that. So the other district-owned software, we have FleetSoft, SchoolDude, and IT Tracking. These are very specific inventory systems. Some of them will include tracking utility consumption, fuel consumption, which we need to report. So that's why we have other district. One solution really doesn't fit all of our needs at this time. Our solution, again, is Follet Resource Manager. It's familiar to staff. They know how to use it. We're using it for library and textbook. So the, we haven't rolled out Haze to the school, schools yet, but that's our next step. We've implemented it. We've been using it for a year. So it's really important that now that we're going to roll it out to schools, I took a step back. I'm not using it the way that it was intended necessarily in the full capacity, but it is a good inventory system. And we can also do this with some cost savings. So the first thing that we need to do is look at all of our data and migrate that into the new system. So basically, that's just an Excel file. We'll get a CSV file. We'll import it into Follet Resource Manager. So all the things that we've been tracking for this past year, we will not lose any of that information. We'll pull that in. We do want to do some data scrubbing on that and really further define what we want to track. And then we'll do a physical inventory count. So we'll have to do an audit, and we'll go out and just do some additional tagging, which again is at no additional cost to do that. It is our staff time, but we have to do it whether we stay at Haze or go with Follet. We'll still have to do this. Total cost is really 11,376. And then part of this process is really moving to the cloud as well. So we want to, as long as we're doing this, we can move to the cloud, which will take less resources for our IRS department. So year one, the 11,376 that we'll have to invest, our Haze inventory annual software maintenance agreement is $30,000. So the first year, we have a cost savings of $18,624. Year two, we'll have that whole $30,000 cost savings, because there's no additional annual maintenance for this upgrade to Follet Resource Manager from what we already have. So that's our return on investment. Reporting back, I'll report back to Cabinet in March 2019 to see how our progress is with, again, that data migration, pulling that in, going out to the schools. So we'll have a team that will go out there. Steve Christopas' team will be doing most of that, and then we'll report back to the Board in July as far as our implementation of this. Any questions?
So I guess I'll ask my, Mr. Segal?
Okay. Will there be any migration fees associated with leaving Haze?
We will have, we need, do need to talk to Haze. We have a 90-day out. So if you look at that amount, it should be about $7,500 to do that. And I had legal look at that to get, to take it out of that.
Okay. Also, in the presentation, there was the mention that there would be a 50% reduction in staff time. I guess that indicates that that's a known value. So what is the cost savings in staff time in going to Follet?
I mean, it is, it is an estimate on that. If we have to choose, if we have to train them how to use a whole new system, how to get into a whole new system, it's, it's difficult to learn another system. This one, they only have to use, really learn a couple of new screens, and we can reference back to what they're already doing.
And will populating the Follet inventory system be easier than it was with Haze? And will there be, I'm guessing, I want to ask this.[410.84][410.84](noise) No. Is there any, a certain efficiency to Follet that was never realized with Haze?
I think they're, I mean, they're both, when you use them both for inventory systems, I mean, they're both comparable. It's an inventory system. It's really not that complicated. I mean, when we go to a new software, if we're going to a brand-new software, implementation takes longer, of course. But to really use it, I mean, we're tracking it, it's tagging. We do the tagging at distribution. It's, it's really about the same. It's really not any more difficult or any easier.
Okay. Thanks.
So will this result in just a single inventory system, other than, did I see that IT is still on a different system?
They are. Now, we can look at migrating them in. We need to work with, there's templates that we can set up in Follet that we can probably use for some of the IT. So we need to work with IT on that. So phase one, what I'm committing to for this year is really to get all the data migration in, to get it out to the schools, and then we'll bring in, we have people that are also tracking on spreadsheets, so we can bring all of that in, in addition to what I put up there. But IT, inventory, they're doing some stuff that we could also use Follet for. We could use it in, probably in Haze or Follet. Both are the same, but it is cheaper alternative.
Is there anything that we're not inventorying, any physical assets?
There are quite a few. So what I want to do is go back and revise what we first thought we wanted to count and just look at that again. What we wanted to count initially was anything that could walk out the door, basically, because that's your higher-risk areas. So, but we also want to tag things that move from school to school. So we have, you know, equipment, desks that are moved from one place to another. So we want to go ahead and go back and tag those, too. So we do need to do some data cleanup, which is what I was referring to.
Mr. Connor?
In terms of the data cleanup, excuse me, when you do the import, just out of curiosity, so typically with cleanup, you'll have the version that you had, and then you'll make your changes. Does that make sense? Right, you don't change your old, because that's a permanent record, right?
There are some things that were tracked that are way below the threshold, so I need to take those out before we import into the new system, because I wouldn't want to put things that we don't care about tracking into the new system.
Okay. I don't want to get too much into detail about it. I'd be very curious about the process, how that's going to work. How many items do we have approximately?
I do have Steve and Chris here, so would you like to guess at how many items we have?
Okay. Yeah. So the ones that aren't quote "walkable," are they also imported? They're just, we're not going to categorize them or what have you?
We'll categorize those.
Okay.
We'll, we'll look at those.
So you literally have everything, you just, if I might say so, so you'll only audit or whatever? That amount is kind of the point, right?
Yeah, we missed some things during the first inventory attempt. So, you know, Steve and his team have identified some areas that we just need to go out and tag. And other departments have also brought it to our attention that there are things that they obviously want to make sure that we track. So we'll just do that all at the same time.
Okay. Do we have any compliance or anything that this list is based on?
Not really compliance. I mean, there was a, we did do a rough policy on this a few years, I think it was three years ago at this point. Probably not a policy, but...
So the accuracy of this list, so what I'm leading to is, are there any consequences if this list is wrong? I mean, is this our official list? And, you know, we send a copy, making it up, of, you know, of all the computer equipment and blah, blah, blah to the state once a year, and so nothing like that?
This isn't reported. Yeah, this isn't, this isn't reported anywhere.
This is internal only?
It's really internal.
Yeah.
We do want to get it on the, on the books, though, but we really need to clean that data first.
Sure. And did, was it a part, a factor that Follet, I assume, is local, right? That's one out of Crystal Lake?
Yes, this is local.
So all our support is out of Crystal Lake, then? All right.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Yar. Mr. Zetiker, please present our next item, Danielson Consulting Group Contract Institute Days.
Good evening. I'm here to present to the committee proposal for Danielson Consulting Group. The, the problem that we have and we're trying to solve is that with the new bargaining agreement with the REA, administration has taken over control of Institute Days. And with this reorganization, we're also changing how we deliver and provide professional development for these two beginning days. And with that reorganization, we have a need for a keynote speaker that coincides with one of the three major areas that we are categorizing our sessions for Institute Day into, and, which is, excuse me, quality instruction. So we recognize the need for a refresher for some and introduction for others around the 2013 version of the Danielson framework. As you know, the Danielson framework is the evaluation tool that we utilize for teachers in our certified staff. And so this will be allow, an opportunity to begin a consistent systematic training structure for our teachers around this evaluation tool. Currently, our district has offered non-systematic approach, hit-and-miss professional development around the Danielson framework. We will have principals give some professional development within their building, which is, are good professional development, but it's not systematic. Buildings are receiving information from different folks. And so since this is the current tool, and there has been an update since 2013 with updated critical attributes, we thought this was an opportune time to bring in the Danielson group to give us one consistent message and to begin that continued learning for our staff. We did look at some alternative choices. The district has contracted with Dr. Richard Volz on some work around the Danielson. Dr. Volz's focus has been with evaluators. And then with the evaluators, he's really focused in on the ratings and then the conversation for evaluators to have with the teaching staff. And so we thought the, to bring in the Danielson would be a different perspective for our REA members rather than Dr. Volz. We will continue to work with Dr. Volz for our evaluator training, and he could sprinkle in REA teacher as well. We also considered in-house training, again, looking at certified evaluators, administrators, BCTs to possibly offer this. But the Danielson group will offer one consistent message for our REA members, and we think this is the, the right tool to do that. So our solution is to contract with the Danielson group. It will allow us to look and have teachers look at professional practice. It will help create consistent expectations for classroom instruction, and both of these align right with Goal One, growth and achievement, and Goal Four, quality staff. Total cost for this consulting contract is $18,000. It will be funded out of Fund 18, so Title II, which is earmarked for professional development. Assessing the situation and taking a look, we will be able to take evaluations from the workshops. So in order for any participant to get their PDCs, which are professional development credits that they need for recertification, it is required that they fill out an evaluation of the sessions. So we'll be able to compile the evaluations from the workshops on the effectiveness of this group. The schools team will be able to review teacher performance throughout the year in evaluations that come through. And then another key piece is our evaluation committee. A lot of what we've heard from the evaluation committee on the REA side is the need for this type of training. So we'll have an opportunity to serve that group and have an opportunity for them to talk with their constituents on the success of this, the style of professional development. So our opportunity costs. With this, we, we believe that we will have veteran-informed teachers, and that we'll have teachers that understand their evaluation tool to a greater degree. They'll understand and interpret and analyze instruction using the updated format and the updated critical attributes, as well as having some of the same and understand, similar understanding of the tool as the evaluators. The evaluators have really had a lot of in-depth work over the last two years on the updated framework, and this will give an opportunity for our REA members to have that same understanding. In terms of reporting back, again, I mentioned the evaluation committee. That is a group that will have an opportunity to report back, both from the workshop evaluations, but also having them an opportunity to report to us on feedback that they've received from their members. We will also report back to Cabinet. I referenced the Teacher Institute Day workshops, so we'll be able to go through those and report back to Cabinet the results of those surveys. And then again, as we're looking and planning for future professional development opportunities around Danielson, Cabinet will be an opportunity to discuss those future endeavors.
Any questions? Questions? Mrs. McCulloch?
So this is a, an option, I mean, we have different options that teachers can choose from, right?
Correct.
So we already have people signed up for this?
We have people...
You know, we haven't approved it yet?
Correct. This was something that we wanted to make sure that we put out as part of our options as, as a keynote presentation for our two days.
So just for the heck of it, if the Board votes it down, where are all those teachers who are signed up for this going to go?
Yep. The Cabinet would have to regroup to decide how we'd redistribute those seats.
It's just about timing to me, because now you, because you know why.[1106.02][1106.02](laughing)
Yes, it is. And it was, it was difficult with not having that second meeting at the end of July and our timeline for planning with the late ratification of the contract. But we do have several seats open in other large sessions that if, if need be, we could reorganize. It would just take some coordination and logistics between the two of us.
So the teachers are supposed to understand how they're being evaluated, as well as how they can use this tool to evaluate what else?
No, they'll use this to understand their tool that's being used to evaluate them. Like I mentioned, Danielson is updated since 2013, and so there's language in there that, that can dive into to understand the difference between examples of what a distinguished teacher is, what a proficient teacher is. And we, as a district, have not really rolled that out. And so this will give them an opportunity to understand what that looks like.
Okay. I noticed on the contract that if you go over, you have to pay, I mean, is there additional work for our presenters if you have 65 versus 55 in the room? Because that was quite an upcharge for, 10 extra people was like $3,000.
Yeah, so we've capped, we've capped the number of folks that can register for that class to ensure that we do not go over.
What's the extra work for the presenter, I guess, is my question?
I don't know the answer to that. That was just something that we discussed within their contract. Typically, they, they cap it off at 50, and they allowed for us, as we discussed what we were looking for, to expand that number at no additional charge, but then they capped that off at 65 before more upcharge. That's just how they operate. So we capped our number of teachers who can register.
Okay. And obviously, if we don't have those numbers, they're not going to do...
Correct.
You know, pardon me. Which is why it made me ask the question. Okay, you're not going to charge us if they're not there, so what, what additional work is it for them? Are they doing anything with the evaluations that are provided by the teachers? I mean, are they, those are coming to you?
Correct.
So, nice. Nice gig. Okay, thank you.
I guess my question's been answered, but I think I was being thrown off by the use of the term keynote, because, so this is not people who are coming in who are going to speak to everybody. There are individual sessions that teachers are signing up for, and only the people who sign up for those particular sessions are going to hear these speakers.
Correct. This is one of the large, more, the larger sessions that we have. So each session that we have, Thursday afternoon, Friday morning, and then again Friday afternoon, we've arranged it as such where there are offerings that will seat from 100 to 500. And we wanted Danielson to be a larger focus for folks. So as we communicated with the REA around these sessions, we highlighted Danielson as one of the keynote subjects that we are offering to teachers for the learning during these sessions.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Connor?
Yeah. We're committed to the Danielson program, or, right?
Correct.
So are there other things that we need to be looking at to make that better? Is this part of a larger plan regarding Danielson, how we apply it, et cetera?
Correct. Yep, this is, this will parlay, for instance, into our new teacher pathway. So part of the new teacher work will be more in-depth work around Danielson and the framework. So this is just one piece to a larger professional development approach around many topics, but evaluation in general.
Do we either record it or have the materials available online? Or do we have a plan of follow-up?
Yeah. So you'll learn in the next presentation around LMS how we will begin to sustain, create sustainable, repeatable trainings and professional development around various topics, but this will be one of those type of topics.
So that's dependent on that, there's no standalone for this itself?
Not at this time.
Okay. Out of curiosity, on the next presentation, is it clear that there's a dependency that the materials would depend on the LMS to be implemented?
Well, I mean, we would, we can manually repeat and manually make copies of things. I mean, certainly manually, you could do it. This just will show the Board how we can systematize that and make that more efficient.
I guess my only point was, is there a backup plan? Because it's, I mean, I assume, let's say that that gets passed.
Yep.
What my mind goes to is more like timing, you know, when it's available for people and that kind of thing.
Sure. That would have to be built into the system.
Yeah.
But we, we've worked with the Danielson group in the past and have received materials from them that we could distribute. So it's not necessarily so time-sensitive on that.
So we're going to standardize on this LMS. I don't want to get ahead of that, but I'm just thinking it in terms of this present that, I guess the question is, in my own mind, again, that's why I asked if we're committed to Danielson, is, you know, are there materials that people would assume would be there that they need, so that they can follow the standards, they can understand all that?
Yes, yes, that would be available to those teachers. Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Mrs. McCulloch?
So this will come to a vote to us next Tuesday?
Correct.
And then the presentation is on Wednesday?
Thursday.
Oh, Thursday.
Thursday and Friday.
Okay. So, and this is just, I don't know how the rest, this is an opportunity for the rest of this. I know that in the past, all the boards I've been on have been very resistive to suspending the rules and saving that for real emergencies. But when you have something like this that you really need to have in place and everything done, and instead of waiting till, and it's not the last minute, I understand we didn't have that second meeting. And thank goodness, we have this one, and we're not doing business, but I saw in the contract, July 5th was, there was a date when, that it was initiated. So if it had come...
Yep. So we had, we had to redo the contract, because originally, we were thinking about just one consultant and a much smaller scale. And then discussion at the Cabinet and the importance of Danielson, we renegotiated the contract for a different contract, which pushed us past, past that July Board meeting to the present day timing.
Okay. Well, that's good to know, because my comment was just going to be that I think there are times when it is appropriate to suspend the rules.
Yep.
Just so that everything's in place and you're not sitting there waiting. I, not, not that there's anything apparent that we wouldn't agree to, but I would feel better about it. Okay, got it now, and we're not voting on business here, so.
Okay, no other questions? Thank you, Mr. Zetiker. Ms. Blanchard, please present our third item, Schoolology Learning Management System.
Good evening. This evening, I'm here to talk about a learning management system. I recognize that back in June at a meeting that I was unable to attend, Diana also presented a learning management system. At that time, she presented the learning management system of campus. We did take that off for a second read, and I will go into that in a little bit more detail when we talk about alternative choices as to why we are now presenting Schoolology. But to get started, the problem that we've come across is that with the new ratified contract, we are required as a professional growth team to create professional development tracks that are available to the certified staff members. We need to be able to really track professional development, track the performance outcomes, house materials, have a spot and a way for teachers to collaborate and to develop job-embedded professional development for them. So it's good timing for me to follow Mr. Zetiker, because some of the things that he just said speak to that, that, for example, the trainings that we've done in the past with Danielson, that we can't capture at this point, or the materials that teachers might need. LMS would allow us to be able to do all of those things. I do have for you, should I do this? Okay, I do have for you a little bit of a kind of walkthrough of an LMS that I would like to show you. And then we'll go into some of the things that we can do with an LMS that we can't do without. I wanted to give you that visualization, because it was my understanding that at the last presentation of an LMS, it was hard to wrap the mind around what that might be, since it's not a commonly used in everybody's world. So I'm going to switch mics and head over here so that I can... So if you can see, this is an example of what Schoolology, what a course room, so to speak, might look like for people as they go into an LMS setting. This is something that, as we look at our new teachers and the new teacher pathway that we've begun to develop, it's still in its skeletal phases. It is a sandbox or kind of a demo site for us, and we've just started working in it. But for example, new teachers would, would go in, they'd have a welcome to the course in the beginning that they could go through, and they would be able to go through and read, for example, a welcome letter of all of the things that they would be able to learn throughout the course of their time in there. Moving back, then teachers could go through, unit by unit, as they work through important parts of their work and systematically and in small chunks. So the first days of school, they would have work that they could go through on their own and together and be able to collaborate. Each unit would include materials for them, which may have readings of PDFs, it may have books that they would have available for them. It might have some videos or things like that in there as well. Activities for them to do, for example, in this one, they have a new teacher scavenger hunt that they can go through. I was, I had the privilege of being at new teacher orientation today, and by the end of the day, those teachers were overwhelmed. And by the end of the day, those teachers were overwhelmed. And to be able to go through on their own time and figure out all of the information that they might need that's important to them, the scavenger hunt for them goes through everything from building access, their schedule, building procedures, to the really important things that they care about, like dress down days and when they have those and what they could wear to them. And then there's also job-embedded tasks and things for them to do with their mentor. So as you can see, when they go through something like that, piece by piece, they are able to do more than they can do in a two-hour session, so to speak. I'll come back over to the center for you. So again, to Mr. Zetiker's point of the hit or miss kind of training that we've done in the past, we're constantly recreating things. Whereas with an LMS, this would be sustainable and systematic. The level of learning can be a lot deeper. Again, my experience today at New Teacher Orientation was overwhelming and a lot of information. Whereas with a system like this, they could do some deep-level learning. The materials, whereas, again, presented earlier, are kind of paper and possibly lost, or where did I put that? Everything would be linked there for them so that they could go back at any time. Our tracking goes from manual spreadsheets and trying to keep track of things using multiple systems to being able to know exactly what each teacher did, possibly use some badging, some mastery-based options, so that if there is a teacher who might be struggling, for example, with an area of Danielson, that they would have extra activities that they would work on, and we can link things. So again, back to Danielson, since that's important for us, we can link things to Danielson. We can link things to the strategic plan and to scorecards. An LMS committee began in October of 2017. And when Diana presented the Canvas LMS in June, she did share that there was also a subcommittee of teachers that worked together, representing teachers from early childhood all the way through high school. Currently, we do a lot of makeshift solutions. We use Google Classroom, we use the Internet. We use a lot of spreadsheets, we use Business Plus. We use a lot of face-to-face sessions as well. Canvas was brought to the board, and I did say I would speak to that. We have backed away from that because as Power School has made changes to their systems, Power School is our student information system that we use, they have made a business decision at this point not to partner with Canvas. So since we do not already have Canvas in place, they would not be compatible with Power School at this point. Schoolology does have a strategic partnership with Power School. And so that is why we have chosen them. They were our second-choice option to begin with. Our alternative choices were Canvas, Google Classroom, which we've used, Haiku, and then Schoolology. Schoolology has now become our first choice because of its partnership with Power School and what it offers to us in terms of what we can do for professional development. The total cost, our contract would be a three-year contract that in the term of those three years, overall, that cost is 303,000... 303,500 dollars. In terms of assessing the situation, we would have project leads from Schoolology that would work with us to maintain timelines, make sure that progress was being made. The LMS can provide quantitative reports for us. At any time, we can pull data that we want. And we can also use surveys to make sure that we're getting the information and the usage that we need. Usage reports, again, through the LMS itself, we can be able to pull those reports anytime. Courses that we build that meet that REA contractual agreement for professional development and linking data back to scorecards so that we can see if our professional development is really improving the work that our teachers do. There is actually a great return on investment for a learning management system. We're saving in terms of figuring out locations for professional development, mileage, food, materials, substitutes for when we have to pull people from buildings. We have the ability to have reusable materials for teachers to do some things at their own timing. And in terms of quality, the return on investment there is that things can be job-embedded, things that are very valuable to their work and linked to their scorecards. Do you have questions for me?
Mr. Connor? Oh, sorry, Mr. Dixon?
Yes. My question is based is, if I was a teacher, where's the accessibility? Would I be able to access this at home? Or does it, is it specific to the school that I have access to it?
That's a great question. You would have access anywhere, anytime. Part of that contract also includes 365 days a year, 24 hours a day, that we would be able to call Schoolology. So if you are a teacher that's working on something at 3:00 in the morning and you're stuck and it's Friday night, you don't have to wait until Chris Tasky gets here Monday morning at 8:00. You can actually make a call right then and continue your work.
Mr. Connor?
Well, I've got a number of questions. One is, overall, LMSs have a long, sad history out in the marketplace. So do we know, sorry? I mean, I'm not just speaking of this particular vendor or anything like that. I'm just saying, in the industry, LMSs have struggled to make money and so forth. So the first thing that caught my ear was that you said that Power School had a relationship with this particular vendor. And so some of my standard questions are always, you know, how committed are they to the market? I mean, what does this tool, how is it in context with everything else they do? Or is this the only thing they do? And how dependent are they on Power School? Because if I heard correctly, we didn't do Canvas because we did this, and one of the big reasons is Power School. So I'm going to start with that. I actually have quite a few questions. But I think the context of this particular vendor, its viability essentially over a long haul, you know, R&amp;D on the tool, I mean, it would seem, this is a lot of investment. And so I don't worry about the education side. Thankfully, I don't know enough to ask on that. But on the software and the rest of it, that's where a lot of the questions I have are, and starting with that one.
Absolutely. As an instructional designer, off the table, I'd love to have some of those conversations with you. I've been working with LMSs since the 90s and could really have some great conversation regarding that. I think in terms of how they have changed over the years, they've changed a lot and they've improved a lot. Canvas and Schoolology at this point are probably, in my opinion, they are the top two on the market. The reason that Canvas is not compatible with Power School is because of that partnership that Power School has made. So in 2018, where things are open-sourced, there, the passback of information has become so much easier, and it's the age in which we live in. Unfortunately for Canvas, Power School has made a decision not to work with them. Schoolology has paid a fee, just to be upfront and honest. They've paid a fee to partner with Power School. And so they have that strategic partnership at this point.
So if I could ask, and I hate to sound this way, but you know, what's our guarantee that in three years, we're not going to be back and saying, oh, that all changed? I mean, and I know things change, so I'm not suggesting that they don't. But, you know, is this a committed, long-term partnership between the two vendors? And what, frankly, because it sounds like it was such a big part of it, directionally, is Power School going to be doing anything to support this particular tool on their side? Because a lot of times, there's either links or there's functions that call in between and so forth.
So Power School has committed to pass back information back and forth with Schoolology. In terms of what's to say...
So would that be, so an example on that would be that, let me just come up with a scenario. Somebody takes this LMS on the teacher's side, and then that goes over to the Power School side for either credentials or tracking something. So there are some things tracked clearly through LMS. Then are there related things on the Power School side, if I hear you correctly, that would be dependent on what's been done over there?
That information could pass back and forth. So for example, if we have data regarding names or class lists or that sort of thing, as teachers get into using things in the future in their classrooms, if they would want to, their class lists would all already pull from Power School into that. And then from Schoolology, they could pass back any grading or that sort of thing, so that those two systems would communicate.
Okay. So that's usually, is there an overhead with this on the IT side? So there's administration, a lot of times there's settings and things that you have to do. Does this simplify the administration, the fact that they are sort of tied together? There's a handshake? Or it doesn't essentially reduce our effort or anything on the administrative side? IT now specifically?
That's, that's...
Sorry. Part of the comment that Kim made with regards to the partnership between Schoolology and Power School is the fact that they've developed an API to allow greater data integration. So in terms of the overhead from the IT department, we're not manually dumping data back and forth into these applications. This API does it in real time. So that's where you get the great passback that happens immediately, and it creates that efficiency.
All right. So that really, so that's two things. That's both the cost savings on staff time, but it could be capabilities going forward, other kinds of things. So I see, do they have plans of extending that API?
Yeah. I mean, because of that partnership, they're constantly reevaluating their relationship and what they can do.
Are we on their, I can never remember what they call these. Essentially, they're a committee that does planning going forward?
We are.
We are, okay. Because that's a big deal. That's something. I mean, that makes a lot of difference. Because that, of course, we, in future releases, and when they come out, we have more of a voice.
Our goal is to help shape the product so that they benefit us in other districts in the long run.
Yeah. Okay. Now, the only thing I will ask is, in terms of costs, and I'm not a huge Google fan, trust me. But, you know, usually, one of the things they do is have a very low-cost entry, right? And so I don't know Google Classroom, but, you know, in terms of strategic partnerships, that kind of thing, because we use Google for so many other things, you know, was there a thought on that side? Or it's just so clearly that Canvas and this Schoolology were just so far and above?
So Google Classroom is one of our makeshift solutions at this point.
Right.
Google Classroom is not really a full LMS, and Google has no plans to make it that. It's kind of, here's a free option. So a lot of the functionalities that a true LMS gives us, Google does not.
Okay. One other thing is, so in terms of the reporting, so it sounds like we can generate reports from Power School that is based on some of the things that you had mentioned, that is data passed over? Is that, does it have like a standard CSV format? So that, you know, if we have a decision at software, we can export to that, that kind of thing? Or is there assumption that all the reporting will be done in those particular software packages?
So from Schoolology would be the place where Schoolology reporting would be pulled? But yes, it could be pulled in a CSV.
The data itself could be exported to another, like, decision support or decision add, that kind of thing?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. And Dr. Wolf, please present the report on Charter School Renewal Process.
Thank you. Let me queue that up. That's better for all of us. Thank you. I had a hard time with the microphone. Well, thank you. On May 15, 2018, I think I did such a wonderful job at the Ed Committee that we ended it by doing... It was, I actually think that the Charter School data was the very last presentation at our Education Committee, and Mrs. McCullough was done with it. But there, and I double-checked to make sure that the data files were on Board docs. So if you went into the Ed Committee, you would find information that we presented then, the enrollment history from the start of our three charter operators to today, the report cards that the Illinois State Board of Ed produces, some notes on funding mechanisms, draft scorecards, and the draft timeline for renewing Galapagos and Legacy that will both be up at the end of 20, this school year, June 30 of 2019. So my task tonight is to update you on the renewal process. So we're pivoting from the data into what we want to do going forward. Our problem is that in 2014, when we did the renewals for Galapagos and Legacy, we were really strong on autonomy. They took all of the allowable structures of freedom of autonomy that was in school code, and they maintained that. Who they hire, how they hire, what kind of staff they hired, what they did for food service, how they enrolled students, transportation, so on and so forth. We put no local accountability system into it. We referenced the state and federal system, which at that time was No Child Left Behind, NCLB. And three months after we inked the contract with them, Illinois won the waiver to NCLB, and there was no accountability system. And so we want to fix that problem as we have this opportunity going forward with 2019 renewals to establish sound academic goals as part of the renewal process. We know over the past nine years that our charter performance has been below the state average on the ISAT and now the PARC. So we know that. And we know that we've had no, as I said, local academic accountability within their contracts. So we want to change that. We had Jackson that was the lowest 5% of priority school under NCLB. Currently, under the preliminary designations, Jackson is a lowest-performing school, which means that they, they're all, all of their students are below the 5% achievement level in the state. And then there's an underperforming label where one or more subgroups is below that. Legacy is in the underperforming group, and Galapagos was not identified in the preliminary identification. We looked at what we could do going forward as we look at Legacy and Galapagos's renewal in 2019. We could basically roll over the current contracts. That would be the easiest way to go, but wouldn't address the problem. We could discontinue them, but it really isn't a viable option at this time. I talked to Illinois State Board of Ed personnel who work in the charter office as well as the executive director of the Illinois Charter School Commission. They don't believe that we could not renew the contracts for Galapagos, yes, Galapagos and Legacy for any academic reasons. And they have met their other contractual requirements. And they have met their other contractual requirements on funding mechanisms, things like that, Open Meetings Act. So discontinuation would be an option, except we don't have the things in our contract to allow that. The third option that we considered was improving our renewal process, and that's what we're suggesting is our solution. We have over 1,000 students served in our charter schools, and if we're going to be the schools of first choice for our families, we need to help all of our students be successful. So here's our solution. We researched best practices a little, two years ago now. Dr. Jarrett Volin told me that I was the new liaison for charter schools, and I do what I like to do. Learn the policies, the procedures, read the contract, understand the rules of the We now have a partnership with the National Association of Charter School Authorizers, NACA. They're the only national organization for charter authorizers. We have also been engaging with the Illinois State Board of Education staff. We have a colleague in, Mary, in Chicago Public Schools. Chicago Public Schools has 123 charter campuses, serving 60,000 students, and 21 of their contracts are up for renewal in 2019. So we have a great thought partner, just 75 miles to the east of us. So we've been researching through those channels, as well as looking at other places. We're in the process of developing a scorecard that will have a dashboard, just like on your car, red, yellow, green, blue. So you might not have blue on your car, but it will be on our dashboard. That would be the exceeding, but you would know that, hey, I want to know where we're at on compliance. So we're working with that. We've been working with Dr. Munson, so that the elements that are common between the school district scorecard on the district-run schools, as well as the charter operator-led public schools, would have this similar element, student achievement. On PARC, now going to be called IAR, Illinois Assessments of Writingness, SAT, all of those elements will be in common. Then there are elements that just the charter operators have to answer for, and the district-led schools do not, like board member qualifications, training, Open Meetings Act, those things, financial stability. So we had one charter operator who closed their Chicago branch because of low enrollment, and they couldn't afford to keep it going. We want to provide you a look at their financial viability, so that in January or February, families aren't displaced because this charter operator can't continue operations. So that's on the charter scorecard that isn't on the district scorecard. We're also working for improvements to the renewal documentation. We'll have a 25-page application, max, that they turn in. What are your academic plans for the next term? What are your goals? And we'll hardwire that into the contract that we bring to you. Our costs are really pretty minimal. The cost of the NACA membership was budgeted in my department, it's $1,500 for the course of the year. It gives us access to templates on charter applications, on renewal applications, on best practices across several fields, financial monitoring, et cetera. Doctors Jarrett, Munson, Ms. Kirschbaum, and myself are planning to go to the NACA convention to, A, deepen our knowledge in in-person training, as well as to meet potential other individuals who might be interested in improving learning outcomes for students here. And then there's staff time. My time on the program side, and Ms. Franny, our EOPM member in INI, does an awful lot of compiling of various reports and things that we do to be compliant. So that is the total cost. There will be three checkpoints that you can assess our progress on this. Before the end of this calendar year, we will give you both a performance report. We need to wait for Illinois to lift the embargo on 2018 data. They do that on October 31. We will then produce our own. We'll have the renewal application that we will start sharing with you. We would anticipate before the end of February that we would do our public hearing, either at a committee of the whole or at a board, on the renewal applications for both Galapagos and Legacy. And then we would anticipate prior to the end of April 2019, a contract renewal for a term that would start on July 1, 2019, to give everybody time to acclimate to the new contract and be ready to serve students, which is, of course, our ultimate goal. The opportunity cost is unfortunately borne on the backs of students. If we have no legal basis for future non-renewal based on low academic performance, students are the ones who pay the price. State code puts funding in a very tight 97% to 103% of a fixed cost. That's not where the great cost is. It's on students. And so, you know, I think we ought to ask seriously about a school's governance, school's leadership, if they have declining or status achievement, and it's not increasing. So we want to make sure that you can enforce, or have at your disposal that lever to support students. Reporting back, as part of our renewal process, we will produce an annual performance report on charters, and we plan to release that in November of each year. Again, the state lifts the embargo on the previous year's standardized test on October 31. We will compile that information, along with the financing, governance, and compliance issues, into a report and produce that to you. So that is a broad overview of our renewal process. What questions might I answer?
Mr. Cottler?
Let me make sure I understood. Is the non-renew option an option for CICS, Jackson?
So they're one year behind.
Right.
So I didn't specifically address them, but at this point, their contract is even lower on the accountability than Jack, I'm sorry, than Legacy and Galapagos.
Sure.
So it would be harder, but one of the things that, so in the spring, Dr. Jarrett led a small team to each of the charters to say, we're doing business differently. We want a real partnership, but student achievement and development has to be first and foremost, and we're going to partner on accountability measures. So they've heard it. We just need to work at getting that reduced into writing.
I guess it goes without saying that this is all voluntary, right, on their part?
No.
No.
So-
Dr. Wolf, I could just interject. Basically, and I appreciate you sharing that perspective, the message I delivered was very clear. We have significant room for improvement as a charter authorizer, and all of our charter schools have significant room for improvement in their performance. And the message I delivered was that we are going to use this time, leading up to the, in the two-year roll-up with Jackson, or the one-year roll-up, to dramatically change how we do business in many, many different ways, and that, yes, they could take a strategy to stonewall us every step of the way, get some type of a lower-level agreement, or we could push things to the state, or we can volunteer. And so the things we talked about, coming together on, were, number one, a common enrollment protocol. Right now, trust is at a very low level. They feel like we are very reluctant to steer students to charter schools. We feel, and as a result, they've acted as very independent actors. We would like to see a common protocol, so that we truly have an onboarding system where students get to make the best choice for the family. We are going to insist that everybody operates on a school report card system. We're going to be debuting that report card system for all schools in our district. The charters will be held to that, in addition to the financial metrics and other charter-based outcomes. So yes, there are some limitations with how the last contract was written and how it's been implemented, but we will immediately start with very high levels of visibility in terms of the improvement, in terms of the performance levels. And if those don't improve, one of the actions we'll be able to take for sure is a much shorter-length contract. So if we have a charter provider that, over the next two years, let's take Jackson for an example, and they are deeply committed to working with us in a collaborative way, and deeply committed to having higher stakes accountability baked into their partnership, we might consider a longer contract. If they are reluctant to do any of that, then we would probably try to push for the shortest possible contract. So we do have a lot of leverage, both by our own behavior, as well as what our expectations are for these schools. And we've made no bones about that, for all schools, student achievement is going to be an opportunity to gain or lose market share as a charter provider. There are going to be opportunities for them to become a very strong and established part. Every single school is struggling for enrollment out of all three groups. There isn't one of them. It's brimming at the seams. So if they want to have opportunities for growth, one of the ways to grow and make their, their operation more sustainable in terms of student participation is to perform at a higher level. So these are all things that we're going to engage in at a very, very high level moving forward. So I see this as an opportunity for us to reestablish the relationship in a very transparent way, and we're going to be making it very clear that the performance has to increase, and the partnership levels have to increase both ways.
Okay, thank you. In terms of the relationship, then building off of what you just said, on the positive side of it, will we be doing more things, and I'm using this only because it's such a simple example, and I realize that there's some natural division there, but essentially, participation, say in sports or extracurriculars, and I know that they have their own way of doing it, but I know there are possibilities. Would that be a part of the incentives, perhaps, that, on the relationship building?
Yes, I think everything, verifying here, I think everything would be on the table. And like, one of the things we did, we had federal art grants. We invited them to our professional development at no cost to them. So we are looking for ways to partner to improve student outcomes and teacher experience.
Okay. Sort of on the mechanical side, when they have to do all the reporting, is that in any way, shape, or form automated, so they don't have to actually fill out a physical piece of paper?
There are some things absolutely, and there are some things beyond our control. The S of reporting is a state-driven thing. The application, it will be digital, but there will be narrative that they need to write. My department will take on the annual performance report. So our goal is that in the renewal contract, we'll have, here's your current achievement level, here are your annual goals, what are your plans to get to there? And then we will produce that for you on where they actually got.
In terms of this new organization we're a part of, do they have benefits sharing where either improvement plan frameworks, or resources, or any of that, that's part of this new group?
Yes, they absolutely do. It's available on the website. I can email and call, and we went to two no-cost training sessions in Chicago with them.
And is it your opinion that this particular group is active with this, or is this more of a passive group that just offers a few things, and that's the relationship?
They're very active. They're very passionate about improving student outcomes across the country, and they have a strong partnership with Chicago. One of their staff members in Chicago used to be a NACA staffer. So I mean, that's how deeply involved they are in actually working. I think some, and, you know, people get to where they get through different philosophical journeys, but I think NACA wants excellent charter schools, and they know that to do that, we have to be excellent charter authorizers. So that's their passion.
So is this a relatively large group with, I mean, I don't remember how many charters there are across Illinois, but, I mean, clearly, Chicago, for obvious reasons, is one of the biggies, but are there others around? Is this something that we can take advantage of with others that are in the same situation with their charters?
North Chicago and Peoria are two that we caucused with at the last meeting.
So there's also that advantage then, that-
Yes.
In addition to the professional help, we have reached out with other communities in similar situations?
Which charter operators are doing really well? Which ones are struggling? Those sorts of things.
Okay, and that'll be part of this scorecard you were talking about, the financials, so on and so forth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to let you go first.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
So can we talk a little more about the scorecard? So I think I missed, I didn't quite understand that part. What part of the scorecard will it be contractually going forward? Can it be?
So our goal, our current contract-
Going forward, or at least our goals, yes?
Will be to hardwire academic goals around standardized tests, as well as some growth metrics into it. So that if, if a charter operator has three years of failing to meet their goals, then the board would have the option to non-renew them, based on academic progress. That's our core principle that we want hardwired.
And when it comes to the scorecard, the plan would be, I'm assuming that the scorecard would be contractual agreement, and it would be as much as possible the same or as that of any of our other schools? So for example, you know, audits, whatnot, that we would typically go to a school, is that something, whatever, it would be as much as possible similar to what any other school, non-charter, would see?
I would jump in on that. It would be the same measurements, but what would be different is, whereas an audit support would be provided to district-run schools, charters typically have increased accountability in exchange for increased flexibility and freedom. So we would certainly be able to have a conversation about allowing school, if we wanted to have them pay some dollars to help defer the staff costs, to add into an audit schedule, that's something we would consider, but it is not something we would be able to require unless we worked it into the charter agreement proactively, that those audits would take place. It is something we could have a discussion about. We would probably need to hold some dollars back in that case, in order to defer some of the costs, because that would mean we'd have to add to the caseload of our auditors.
Okay. I guess the reason why I'm asking you this is, as we go forward, right, and we say if we're going to have, we're going to have new contracts, and we're going to have charters with, let's say, three-year contract, waiting three years down the road to realize or know that we can, it'd be nice to have some type of leverage early on, that we can work with them, either to guide them, just like we would with any other school, so that we're not, again, it's this sense of urgency that we're not waiting until the end of the year, we're not waiting until the semester. There's, I mean, you guys know the details better, but that's just my only comment.
Illinois now has an accountability matrix that we'll be rolling out, and there are dollars attached to that, and we can jump right in. Jackson and Legacy will be part of this first wave. So there are different channels to come to provide assistance. We don't have to wait three years for that. We'll be doing it this fall.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't have any questions. I guess I just had a comment. And one of the things that hopefully we can do in these committee meetings is, it's a little more informal, and maybe have some discussions that are harder to have, and with less pressure. I like everything you're saying. At a 40,000-foot level, I heard this presentation the last time the charters came up for renewal. And Mrs. McCulloch's laughing because she heard the same presentation. And the presentation was, the contracts, the original contracts were no good, they didn't allow us to hold the charters accountable, and we're going to fix that. That was the presentation. And I can remember sitting over there and asking the person who was giving the presentation, are you sure that you did everything needed in these contracts so that we could hold the charters accountable? And the answer was yes. So this is disappointing, I got to tell you. It really is, for me. You know, as a governance board, we're supposed to ask those questions, and then we're supposed to be able to rely on the answers that we get. So I'm going to trust you, Dr. Wolf, to get it right this time. And it sounds like, you know, there are some things that are changing, it sounds like there are some other resources out there that will help us. It sounds like there are some other resources out there that will help us. But really, I hope whoever is sitting through this presentation, the next time the charter renewals come up, doesn't get the same presentation. And that's, that's my comment. Are there any other questions or comments?
I would just add that I, I share your concern, and I personally, involving myself in the work for that reason, Mr. Rollins, I mean, we have to make sure that we have the right kind of partnership. And I think candidly, our strategy of working, working with our charters was one of almost completely ignoring, other than financial issues, and that's just not an acceptable long-term strategy moving forward, and we have to be more involved in that partnership. And that will either bear better results, or it will bear a very clear decision to, to part ways, but we will do the work that is necessary to ensure that we are not in this position again.
All right, thank you. That is the last item on our agenda. We did not have anyone sign up for petitions or communications. Is there any new business? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.